Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'll just to let the folks that are recording this and transmitting it, plus we're going to be prepared with the government, letting them know that we are about to begin. So, welcome, folks, to the February 25th meeting of the Zoning Board Appeals. My name is Rob Champetti, Chairman. In a moment, I'm going to introduce the board, and I'll quickly walk through for folks that are new to the meeting exactly how the flow of the zoning board appeals works and how things move kind of smoothly through the agenda. It's a fairly short, relatively speaking, agenda, but since we are at the published time of 7:00 p.m., I'm going to begin by just introducing the board. We'll then go through the roll call, which point I'll walk everyone through the flow between application presentation, the public hearing portion, questions, and deliberations, and we'll also explain the microphones and how to come and speak and share your thoughts with respect to any given application. So with that, we are formally calling to her the February 25th Newburyport Zoning Board of Appeals Public Hearing. So the first matter that we have on our agenda is actually just more of a housekeeping matter.
Yeah, so that's what we're doing.
We'll do that one first. And basically, we will begin by doing the roll call. So I'll ask Mr. Palmer if you can call the board, see who's here.
All right. Roll call for the meeting of February 25th, 2020. Mr. Champetti.
Here.
Let's come on here. Ms. Cameron.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Delisle.
Here.
Ms. Webb.
Here.
And Mr. -- I'm sorry.
Swanton.
Swanson.
Swanton.
Thank you. All present.
Excellent. So for the first time in a long time, ladies and gentlemen, we have a full board, which is fantastic. To take a moment, allow me to introduce the members and those in the room. To my immediate -- I'd like to introduce Ms. Caitlin Sullivan, our City Planner. To her right, our Vice Chair Ed Cameron. To his right, Mr. Mark Moore, member. To his right, Mr. Stephen Delisle, also a member. To my immediate left is our note taker, Ms. Gretchen Joy. To her left, our newest member, who we would like to welcome, Mr. Ken Swanton. Thank you. It's not too late to run screaming for the door. I promise it's going to be fun. And we really, really appreciate your willingness to serve, and we look forward to being able to work with you. So thank you for being here. To Mr. Swanton's left, Ms. Rachel Webb. And to Ms. Webb's left, Ms. Maureen Pomoy, our Secretary. My name is again Rob Champetti, I'm the Chairman. And with that, we have a call, and we can proceed into our business meeting. The first matter on the agenda is approval of the minutes, all of which the members have. Minutes are also published on the Newburyport's website, so for both current reference and future reference to the extent anyone is interested. All of this material and everything that's being published on the board to my left, to the screen, which we'll mention in a moment, how that will -- where all of that material is also published to the city's website. Every single meeting, well in advance of the meeting, to the same extent that print copies are put in the planning office, anyone can easily also log on, download, read, and review to the extent you wish. So there's a great sort of access piece there. So to that point, the minutes are also published on that site. And the members, we have the minutes before us. Does anyone have any comments or revisions, questions or clarifications?
Couple of typos. I could just get with Gretchen afterwards.
Anything else substantive worth noting that needs to be addressed?
Well, at the top of page three, there was a comment about replace -- the first line, actually, says, "Replace the new garage just three feet off the side setback, which would result in a new nonconformity." I think it's supposed to say, "Which would not result in a new nonconformity." Because then further down in the first line where it says, Ms. Pomoy said, "The applicant has met the criteria for special permit," and no new nonconformity has been created. They need to --
Okay. All right. So Ms. Joy, we'll just make that revision in the ordinary course. Anything else that needs to be addressed? Do we have a motion?
A motion to approve the minutes.
Seconded.
Motion is made and seconded. Mr. Palmer, will you just do a voice roll call? I'll do some favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and minutes are adopted. So moving on to the next matter, we have a review of draft decision regarding 575th Street, which was a matter that was before the board. The board had voted on it. This board had voted on it. The decision has been prepared in some detail so that it can be finally recorded with the city clerk. Everyone's had, I think, some opportunity to take a look at it, and I think there were a few changes or very slight sort of typographical revisions made, but nothing substantive that I saw. Was there anything else that needed to be addressed?
Rob, excuse me.
Yeah?
Mr. Chair, I had two very, again, non-substantive comments in the middle paragraph on page three of eight. In that middle paragraph, or the first full paragraph, the drafter talks about the minimum lot size and refers to it as 5K square feet rather than 5,000 square feet. That appears twice.
Okay. So basically, the finding replace of any reference to K or thousands.
Yeah.
Just actually spelling it.
Typing it, or just typing it out with numerals. That would be fine. Thank you.
Okay. Let's see. And, you know, it probably makes sense just for purposes of public transparency with respect to any other notes, even if they're ministerial ones, could -- and I think, I think, Rachel, you would have one.
I'd add one with the markup.
Is there something else you would point out?
Hey, and I'll mention mine.
I sent it in an email today.
You have it too, folks.
I just want to, you know, so that --
Oh, here they are. Yep. Okay.
Just so the public has --
Sure.
As well as the applicant.
Yep. Page six, the last paragraph, the first line, the word "board" is misspelled. So it should say, "Notwithstanding previous growth and development on my own, this board in the granting of special relief."
Yeah.
And the following page, page seven, under item two, the word "applicant" was misspelled. Those were the only two.
And then I had on page three, second to last paragraph, and it wasn't -- it was more a grammatical preference. The first line of the second to last paragraph, key questions for this board were then and still are, was the old verbiage I suggested to change it to. Get rid of the "still are" and say, "remain now."
I remember seeing that as well. Yeah, I agree with that. All right. Other than those changes to the form, format, and grammar, and a few other notes, was there anything else? So what we need to do as a board now, since this was our decision, we've now seen it in written form and articulated, we need to essentially ratify it by voting if I vote, so that I will then sign it on our behalf and then file it with the city clerk. So we'll need a motion seconded and then a formal roll call.
Okay. Make a motion to approve the decision for 575th Street, case number 2020-004.
Seconded.
Motion is made and seconded. Ms. Pomoy?
Yes. It's really, it's not a roll -- I don't have any.
Right. So will --
Is it just a voice?
Any favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the record proceedings and dimensional variance decision has been adopted, and I will endorse it so that it can be filed. Okay. That moves us into the public hearing. You want to do this now? Or do this to your -- Moving into the public hearing, so before we jump into the first public hearing on the agenda, we can just take a moment and just explain how the board flows for those that haven't been here before. Thanks. With each public hearing at this phase, we will read the public notice, especially in new hearing that hasn't been continued. We'll read the formal notice. That's the legal notice that was published in the newspaper and was also part of the application filed. After we read the public notice, we invite the applicant or the applicant's representatives, professionals to come forward and make a presentation to the board. As far as where to stand and what to do, we have a handheld mic here to my left, just Ms. Joyce, immediate right. It's important so that it doesn't amplify, so you won't hear your own voice amplified anywhere, but it's being carried on Comcast's broadcast. If you can use that mic with respect to applicants, if you're coming forward, you may feel free to stand wherever you're comfortable. With respect to that section, we'll be presenting and making reference to materials that will be put up on this board. Unfortunately, those viewing at home won't be able to see this, but we'll have to, unfortunately, at least for now, follow it electronically until we can find a way to zoom in on this with cameras and have it actually be legible. After we hear from the applicant, we will then go to the public that's sitting in the room to inquire to anyone who wishes to speak in support of the application. If you wish to speak in support or to that matter in opposition, we will ask you to come forward. If you can stand at this mic in the center of the chambers, just state your name and address for the record, and then speak your line. And comments in support will be gathered. We will then move to anyone who wishes to speak in opposition. Same thing applies. If you're not sure whether you are for or against, but simply have something to say, feel no obligation to stand in any specific juncture. Just feel free to stand, come forward, and pick whichever, you know, whichever segment you wish to speak in. After we hear from the audience for and against, we then go to questions from the board. That's the segment where the board members will ask questions, either of the applicant, the applicant's representatives, or professionals. The board may also reiterate questions that were posed by members of the public. And that's sort of how that, you know, question that you may pose, that doesn't have a formal response sent into it from us, that's how that's sort of developed into the end of proceedings. After that period of questions, the board will then close that section, that segment of the public hearing, and move into deliberations. Deliberations are simply that we then, we basically speak out loud and within full, you know, full line of sight, earshot of all of you, with respect to what we're thinking, what the board's thinking, how it's deliberating, questions it might have. It may prompt additional questions. After the deliberations is when the board will move the matter to a vote. Under Robert's rules, the way it happens is the votes always made, the motion's always made in the affirmative, so it's always a motion to approve, even if the vote doesn't carry approval. The motion's made, it's seconded, and then a vote happens. And if the motion carries, that means the application's approved. And you'll be able to see the folks, you'll be able to see the folks in the planning office for further information on what happens next and what the timeline is after that. So having gone through all of that, without any further ado, we'll move into the first public hearing, which is 71 Federal Street. I'll go ahead and read the public notice, and then we'll jump right into that. Oh, is, was there someone that we had to recuse themselves on?
None.
No? Okay. So we have a full voting member, we have a full board. By the way, in order for a motion to carry, these four members must vote in the affirmative, so we have more than enough members so that we don't have a shortage of voting members. Okay. Notice of public hearing, Newburyport Zoning Board of Appeals, hold the public hearing on an application for special permit for nonconformities filed by Crane Properties, care of Michael Dos Santos for the property owned by Crane Properties LLC, located at 71 Federal Street in the R2 zoning district indicated by assessors map and parcel 18 slash 75. The hearing will be held in City Hall, 60 Pleasant Street, Newburyport, Mass., on the 25th of February, at which time all interested parties will be heard. Request is made under Newburyport zoning ordinance, section 92, extension and alteration. The applicant seeks all necessary approvals, permits, special permits, and/or variances on the following request: to construct a 12 by 22-foot detached garage resulting in an extension of a pre-existing nonconforming lot coverage. May we hear from the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm old school, so I still got the phone core board. Is the mic on, or?
Yeah. Mic's on, just won't --
Yep. Excuse me. Hi. So my name is Bill Nolan from Savoy Nolan Architects. I'm here representing the clients, my clients. Today with me is my associate, John Fennell, from Savoy Nolan Architects, and the owner, Shauna Dos Santos. Mike couldn't be with us tonight. So the project, 71 Federal Street, this is the parcel here. There's an existing, highlighted in pink, dwelling there, single-family dwelling. We're simply looking to put a modest, single-car garage. The dimensions of the garage are 12 by 22 here. This is the property line here. We carefully went over the regulations, met with the zoning agent, and got clarification that we needed 10 feet of separation from the garage to any principal dwellings or adjacent dwellings, and it needed to be a minimum of 6 feet off of any property line. So the garage, I believe, meets the zoning dimensional requirements in all cases, except it does intensify the existing nonconforming lot coverage. Our lot coverage here, and as it was described in the application, is at 28%. The required is 25%. That's slightly conservative, because I just wanted to mention that there was an existing shed of approximately 135 square feet that was removed. That didn't calculate into the 28%. So when the Dos Santos bought the property, there was actually 31%. Just a clarification. I think on some of the information, we may have included it. On the application, we took the most conservative route and didn't. Anyways, we're looking to, the new garage will increase, or we're asking for an increase of 34%, up to 34% with the garage. The garage, again, as I said, will meet the dimensional setbacks. It's 12 by 22, which is allowed, and it's going to be about 14, excuse me, it's about 14 feet, the required height, maximum height is 15 feet. Just a simple, modest construction. It's going to match the siding of the existing house, so it'll blend with it. Nothing too crazy there, single car. This is a Bing map of the existing house right here. This is, I superimposed the box. It's roughly to scale. It's in the back of the property. This is the existing driveway, existing driveway here. So this plan, this is Federal Street right here, existing driveway. We're putting it towards the rear of the house, and it'll create a nice little courtyard in the back here. This is the existing house. Don't mind this guy right here, he's not breaking in. That's me just taking some measurements. There's a street shot up the driveway, and it's going behind here. So I think that's the extent of what we're looking to do. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thanks very much. So having heard from the applicant, does anyone wish to speak in support of the application? Seeing no hands, anyone wish to speak in opposition? Mr. Colter John?
Tom Colter, John, 60th Federal Street, co-president of the Newburyport Preservation Trust. This application for me is like adding insult to injury, okay? I live just down the street. I go past this building every day. I used to love to look at this building. And now I want to cry. They gutted this building inside and out. They ruined the building. They just ruined it. Everything went in the dumpster. There was an elderly man, Mr. Cousins, who used to try to take care of it and fix it up and so forth, and then ultimately he passed on. But what they have done is ruin us. You look at it now, sure, they showed you these nice pictures. This is what it looked like, but not what it looks like now. It's a shadow of its former self, and I think it's shameful. And I'll just show you one of the examples of the thing that's evident to everybody. You look at the last picture in the rear of the building, it shows six over sevens, okay? This nice picture, the one before this, in the front and the main portion is visible from the street, has eight over eights, okay? Appropriate to the house. So what do they do? They put two over twos. So, you know, we're eight years off on the style of window. It doesn't fit. It doesn't fit in the neighborhood. And now what they want to do is, oh, well, we ruined this house, and then they want to put in this humongous driveway out of concrete, and then a garage. We don't have enough infill in the south end? They want to add to it? Please say no. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Colter John. Anyone else wish to speak in opposition? Ms. Nikotich?
Stephanie Nikotich, 93, High Street. According to the application, they are adding impervious surface to this small lot. So if you take, they're adding 300 square feet of concrete driveway, a 264-foot structure. They are removing 135-foot structure, but the net increase of impervious surface on this lot will be 425 square feet. They note that the new siding of, or just the siding, since it's a new building, the siding of this garage to match existing house. And I guess a question for you might be, "To match what?" Because I believe what they put on it is a composite siding. So it's ahistoric. Sure, it might match what they did to the building, but it's, you know, it's not a, you know, we're doing something special on materials here. I don't believe they are. It's also incongruous that they're showing six over six windows in the garage after they changed the existing historic building to two over twos. It's just, it's kind of weird. And as Tom said, it is, it's an insult to this neighborhood and the streetscape. And because they are increasing lot coverage, this is totally discretionary. I would ask the board to please deny this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in opposition? Anyone else wish to speak at all? Okay. Seeing no further questions, we'll go to questions from the board.
I'll start.
Please.
Can you, what material will you be using for the driveway? What's been proposed?
I guess it's up for a debate. We're calling it, for it to be pavement, to extend the existing driveway into it. And I believe we can do it, I believe we still meet the open space calculations, but I mean, we could be open to suggestions.
Have you looked at all into any type of impervious or, for that matter, just gravel?
Yeah. I guess the only, the only challenge with that is connecting it back to, it might look a little awkward if it's, if there's kind of two materials transitioning, but certainly we could consider that, yeah. Probably gravel would be, or some type of a paver. That's a good question.
I have a question on the shed that was there. It's not there anymore.
Yep.
And one of the numbers that was given for utility storage shed was 98 square feet gross area, and you have it at 135 on another? I'm just wondering why the disparity in size of the shed.
Yeah, that's a great question. I didn't see the 98. Do you know where that's being referenced? I might be able to answer it more accurate that way. I do know the 135 comes from our hand measurements. So we go out there, we measure the entire house with a tape measure, every --
Yeah, it's just from building information.
Yeah. So it's not uncommon. We take gross square footage the same way that it counts, you know, against us. We did a measurement, we put it in CAD to scale, and then we trace around it. So, you know, this, it's a tape measure, it's transferred to CAD. CAD's very accurate, but, you know, we draw straight lines, so there may be a corner here. But I think, you know, we do this quite often, and it's taken that it's as accurate as we can get it.
And the shed's gone already, right?
Yeah, the shed's gone, yeah. It was actually on, I think, a part of the neighbor's property or right on the line. It was in a pretty good state of disrepair. But just to actually go back to that question, where, and I think that's one of the reasons why we're not, we didn't count it in the actual proposal that we sent to you, or the application. We're still a nonconforming, because we're still without that shed over it, so I'd be happy to accept 98 if that, you know, if that helps.
I have a question. If we could go to page number 10 out of 12?
Yeah, get rid of that. Don't show that anymore.
Yeah, that one. The previous one. So I know the setback, side setback for the proposed garage, I believe, is nine, nine feet, four inches from the line.
From the line, yeah.
How close is that line to the other, the other building there? I don't know what number that is.
73, this building right here. Well, there's a jog here. Can you see this plan?
Yeah.
Okay. There's a little bit of a jog there. It's actually right on the line where it hits these corners, so we took it to the, from the closest point to the building, and we're at about 10 foot two. So we're --
And the building at that other, other lot, how close is that?
Oh, it's right on it. It's right on the line at various points. Yeah. So it's, it's not a, it's not a consistent, but at its closest point, it's right on it in a couple locations. Right here, it follows it. I'd say it's less than a foot off of here. There's a jog in the building right here. See it right there? That dips, and you're probably, you know, maybe close to two feet or just under, and then it goes back to touching it here.
Do you have a sense of that, that block of Federal Street? How many other properties might have garages?
You know, it's funny, I did, I, so I didn't, I didn't do like a site survey, I didn't walk around looking at it. I did un-Google Earth, do that, and I noticed that there were some larger buildings. There's the corner right here of Horton Street, and I know there's some larger buildings over here. I just looked in this immediate and didn't see, I mean, there's some, definitely some bigger buildings than the existing house, but I didn't see a detached garage per se within, you know, this close vicinity.
Any other questions?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
It was brought up about the windows. Could you comment on what kind of windows you're using in the garage?
They will match the house, so it would probably be two over twos.
And the siding, what would be the siding on the garage?
Can I ask the owner just what they ended up?
Oh, yeah, of course.
Sometimes we expect, excuse me for one second, I just want to make sure I'm right. Yeah, okay. So it's hardy plank, hardy board.
And that's the same that was used on the old structure, the house itself? So it matches? It's the same?
Yeah, so the, we're going to use hardy structure, a hardy plank on the, on the garage if it's granted, and the existing house has the same material, and yes. We want it, we want it to match, we want it to blend, looks like it's part of the property. Good question. Thank you.
So to dovetail on that question, the plans that you show us render an eight over eight window, so we would, if you're saying, if you're saying that it's now going to be two over two, that would have to just be resubmitted to reflect that. Oh, thank you.
Sure.
And with respect to the cementitious siding on the main house, what's the reveal there, the clavard reveal?
It's a good ques, I think it's five-inch reveal. Yeah, I believe it's a five-inch reveal. I can definitively answer that, just not right now.
But a house of that period had a five-inch reveal? Because that, I mean, I don't know that's not correct. That would just be inconsistent with what we typically see in that period. Usually like a three-inch would be what is seen. And the only reason I ask is that, you know, part of what is within the purview of our review is the aesthetic piece as it relates to impact and congruity and continuity with the neighborhood. You know, substantially more detrimental is the standard, as you know. So while not maybe central, but sometimes it is, things like this are part of the big, you know, the fabric of that big picture for us.
Yeah, completely understood. I guess, I guess how I would turn it back is that we're here for the garage, we're not here for the house, and the house is already built.
No, I understand.
So what we're trying to do is match the house. The house is there, yeah.
So in fairness, and I, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, Bill, but in fairness, if we're going to, if the application is tethering the description of materials and details of the garage, which is what we're here for, to something else that exists, you know, we, in order for us to do that math, we need to, you know, we need to kind of know, or maybe just want -- need to kind of know, or maybe just want to know, and not that it, like I said, it might not be central to all of the members, but it's definitely, again, part of that fabric. So things like materials and, and reveal and windows, because you're matching the garage to the house, for us to know that's what that match means, that's, that's why we ask.
So I can definitively answer that the siding reveal and material will match the existing house. I thought it was a five inch, but I could, I, I don't know that for certain, so I guess I take it for, for face value. It will match, I can say that definitively. And we will, we will switch, that was an oversight on my part with the windows. We're really focused on, on the side yard setbacks, lot coverage, that was really the, the challenge with, with this project in particular. And probably, you know, had some oversight on the, on the windows, not matching. There will be two over twos to match the house.
Okay. Is there anything up in that, just a follow-on question? This, this window that's shown in the, in the pediment of that?
It's actually a louver.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's not a window?
No.
So there's no space up there? This isn't large enough for?
No. Yeah, no, it's, I mean, there'll be, there'll be rafter, there'll be rafter ties that'll...
So collar ties?
Collar ties across that. They might throw a piece of plywood up there for some storage, but there's, nobody could exist up in there. We're not putting a staircase or anything.
What is the, what is the manufacture of the window of the main house to which this will match? Is it?
I don't know that off the top of my head. What we spec sometimes doesn't get installed, so I'd have to touch base with Mike, I don't think, or do you know?
Marvin?
Marvin.
So simulated divided light? And I know we're getting into the weeds, but since we're tying one thing to another, it, I think it's just something that...
The simulated divided lights, can you see, it, so there's, simulated divided lights has the bar on the outside of the window, inside of the window.
It's not in the inside.
Is it between the glass?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, so I don't know that. I can find it out for you.
Any other questions?
Can you go to page 12? So the strange guy that's not doing it, no, is that 12? The one with the backyard view, that one? Is that doorway that, I don't know who's peeking at the door, is that the shed that was removed? That's you? Is that the shed that was removed?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
So whether that's 134 by your measurements or 98?
98.
I mean, 98, 134 makes the differ, I mean, makes the difference less, but either way, the new garage will be roughly double the size of that.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's fair.
Yeah.
The garage is 264.
Excuse me, can I just check? She has an exterior picture, I might be able to answer.
Yeah, absolutely. 64, 135, that's 270, 264 is the garage. So that was the shed.
Okay, so I overstated, I think it's a, I can, if I can approach the bench.
Sure.
Looks like it's, yeah, well, you got to gavel, it's official. Four, I think that's like a four.
Can we pass this around as well?
It's not mine.
Is it okay if we pass this? Okay, so this is what's there now, and these look like Marvin integritys?
Yeah, so it wasn't, this is a construction picture, it's not completed at this point, so, but the, the reveal is not five inches, it's, it's smaller, so it's four.
Bill, as that goes, as that goes around, would you mind also allowing Ms. Nikodich and Mr. Coulter John, sitting right there, who commented in the audience?
Sure, yeah.
To see it as well, as it comes around? Thanks.
So that's the back as of now?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. I'll be forward and come back to you guys.
Thanks for having and sharing that. Okay, any other questions? No? Moving then to deliberations. And again, the, what's before us, and certainly just to kind of provide some shell work and guidance, the existing structure is, is not what's before us, though obviously it's, how it exists now is not irrelevant in our discussion and deliberation. But that was not something that came before the board, we didn't grant a permit for that, that's purely within the purview of the Historic Commission, if, if at all, and the Building Commissioner. So that being said, what we are being asked to decide is whether the new proposed accessory structure placed where it is, though it intensifies an existing, a pre-existing nonconformity of lot coverage, whether that, whether it creates a new nonconformity, and whether that new nonconformity will be more, substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconformity use or structure. So those are the standards, and someone, one of you will have to start off the deliberations.
Well, my, my questions were getting to the heart of the lot coverage, so whether it was 28 to 35 or 31 to 35, the concern when I went to look at this in person and look at the neighborhood, I, I agree with you, I didn't see a lot of standalone garages in the neighborhood, or in the immediate vicinity. And the doubling of the, of a structure in that tiny space honestly concerned me, and I didn't think it was such a small thing to increase the lot coverage by that much. So that is a concern I have. As far as style goes, that's, you know, yes, it's going to match, which already been done in the house. That was secondary to my, my intensification, I guess, concern was where I was going with.
Thank you.
I think I'll, I'll mirror some of Mr. Moore's comments. I have an issue with the intensification of the lot coverage, the fact that we're also putting on more impervious surface as of right now, on top of that also, it's a tight area. I've been on the property, so I know exactly, before you guys purchased it, I did the open house tour, so I know what we're dealing with for size. I just think it's, adding a garage to that lot is just, it's intensifying the existing nonconformity, and the size and massing of it in comparison to what the lot is, I don't think I could support it.
Am I allowed to respond or no?
Well, we're, we're in deliberations right now, but we will, I'll circle back to allow you to address any, in the form of questions, for sure. Any other deliberations? Yes?
I would just echo what Ms. Palmeroy said. You know, to me, it does seem like it's substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. It is, that's why I was asking about that other lot line. It's unusual to have a garage in that neighborhood. I live about four blocks away and walk that, I think I've been in that house a few times. Been in pretty much every house on Federal Street that's sold in the last 10 years, so to squeeze a garage in there, I think, is, is, you know, is definitely an intensification. So...
So as we're deliberating, seeing numerically where we are as a voting board, I'm going to take a moment and pause and just ask for a quick straw sense of the board with respect to those members who feel as though, as the application's presented, that it is something that they feel they could support. And I suspected that was kind of a sentiment that is being articulated. So we can continue what we're doing. We would also entertain a motion, should you choose to make it, on behalf of your client to withdraw or continue.
Can I ask for a brief, two-minute conference with my client?
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Be right back.
As a matter of fact, while, while you're doing that, we have a matter of, of business that we can attend to with respect to a continuation, and then we can pick that, that up. So while Mr. Nolan's speaking with his client on this application, we're just going to put that on pause for a second. We had a request for 1250 Fourth Street to continue, and in case anyone is here in the audience that wishes to speak on behalf of that application, it's at the bottom of the agenda so as to not have you sit here and wait only to be told it's going to happen another time. I wanted to let everyone know that. And with that, does...
Do we know what, when it's continued to?
Yeah, we, we have it, is that your client? Is it, it's 1250 Fourth Street? No? Okay.
Nope, it's to March 24th.
Okay. So the, the request has been made via email to, to Ms. Sullivan in the planning office. They're formally asking for continuance to March 24th, so that they can have time to, I guess, further refine their, their application. So we can, we can just simply take a voice motion and vote on the continuation and move it along?
Motion to continue, application number 2020-019 for 1250 Fourth Street to the meeting of March 24th, 2020.
Second. Motion's made and seconded, Ms. Palmeroy.
Motion's made by myself, seconded by Mr. Cameron, to continue the application to March 24th, 2020 meeting. Mr. Champetti?
Yes.
Ms. Palmeroy, yes. Mr. Cameron?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Delisle?
Yes. Five in the affirmative, motion carries, the matter's continued to the meeting of 324. Oh, thank you. Caitlin, this is, I signed this, this is, this is all set.
Okay, want to make those changes?
Great.
Cool.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
What say you, sir? Oh, a microphone too, please.
We say that I think after referring the client, they'd like to withdraw.
Withdraw, not continue?
Yeah, withdraw without prejudice.
Okay. Okay, so the applicant is asking the board to consider making a motion and voting upon a motion to withdraw without prejudice. We would just need a member to make a motion and second.
I'll make a motion to withdraw without prejudice, the application number 2020-016 through 71 Federal Street.
Motion's made and seconded.
Motion made by myself, seconded by Mr. Moore, to withdraw the application of 2020-016 through 71 Federal Street. Mr. Champetti?
Yes.
Palmeroy, yes. Mr. Cameron?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And Mr. Delisle?
Yes. And just for clarity, though it's, it goes without saying, it's, the motion's technically to accept the applicant's request to withdraw versus us withdrawing it. Okay, so that matter is withdrawn without prejudice.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nolan. Thank you. And for folks that have spoken, thank you for your comments. Okay. Okay, moving to, pardon me, moving to the next application. This is the application for 35 Temple Street. Due to the proximity of a property that I have an ownership interest in, I have to recuse myself as an abutter, and I believe Ms. Palmer, who else is recusing?
No, no.
Oh, Mr. Cameron, so that means it is your gavel, sir.
Officer Cameron's going to withdraw too.
All right.
It's time to do this to me, I need at least a month's notice.
At least a month's notice? So I put up a mine?
Yeah, I got my laptop.
You do? Okay, great. So here's the, here's the public notice.
It may take a couple hours, so relax.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Oh, the power here. So, so we're going to hear item 2020-017, this is 35 Temple Street. Get myself organized here.
Ed, do you need the legal notice?
I do have it.
You have it?
I'm just trying to restart my computer here. So first I'll read the legal notice. Notice of a public hearing, the Newburyport Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on an application for a dimensional variance requested or filed by Peter Carzasti care of Lisa Mead, Mead Tellerman and Costa LLC for property owned by Stephen Carzasti, Mark McKay and Peter Carzasti located at 35 Temple Street in the R2 District and indicated as assessor's map and parcel 15-60-A. The hearing will be held at City Hall, 60 Pleasant Street, Newburyport, Mass. on February 25th, 2020 at 7:00 PM, at which time all interested parties will be heard. The request is made under Newburyport's zoning ordinance section, where you test my Roman numerals, six A dimensional controls. The applicant seeks all necessary approvals, permits, special permits and/or variances on the following request. Modify variance to remove existing one-story shed attached to rear of residential structure and construct one-story addition in same location with slightly larger footprint. And if we could hear from the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board, Lisa Mead, Mead Tellerman, Costa, 30 Green Street, on behalf of the applicant, Peter Carzasti, who's here with us this evening. This is for 35 Temple Street. It's a half-house. Was built in the mid-1700s. The shed on the rear is probably dated to that, about that same age. As a result, because we're changing the roof line, i.e. removing the entire shed, we went to the Historic Commission who granted the demolition delay for the shed in the back. And just to give you an idea, so if you're standing in front of, many of you probably know this house on Temple Street, if you're standing in front of Temple Street, it's the house, part of the house that's on the right, and you really, you can't see the shed from the street. So here we are, and I'll just, this is the corner of the shed, you can see it from the street. And then you can see it on the side yard here. Obviously, here it is in the back of it, there's a piece of it here. I'll just show a couple other photos, so you get an idea. It's, the materials are both current materials as well as very old materials in the shed. Obviously, it's seen its better day. And I just wanted to give you an idea, the shed is actually not integrated into the house. There's another, the view of it, so you can see it here, kind of from the back on Orange Street. And here it is again, and that's the inside of it. So it's used for some storage, but not really, it's not integrated into the house, but it's attached to the house. And what the request is, is to remove the shed, reconstruct the shed with a larger footprint. So when I get to the architectural drawings, I can show you this. So the shed is currently 10-10 feet wide, and it's attached to the house. So this is the current outline of the existing shed right here. That will continue, this is 10-10 across the back here, and a 10-foot addition is going and attaching to the house here. The purpose is to create a bedroom and a bathroom that's handicapped accessible for Peter's brother, who is handicapped and is going to move back to Newburyport and live in the house with Peter. And Peter will be taking care of him, and he needs a first-floor bedroom that can be ambulated along with the bathroom. I'll flip through the plans before I go. So there's our, the front elevation of the half-house, here's the side, and here you can see the existing condition in the back. And then there is the proposed condition. So this is the addition right here, and then that's the slider of the entry. And again, this doesn't change, that section of it does not change at all. And then you can see this on the side and the back. So I'm going to go, I'll go to the floor plan so you can see the exact dimension. So here is the existing condition, and then, whoops, Eileen has this, so it becomes 20 feet, 10 inches along the entire back, and the existing condition is 10 feet with the addition of, 10 feet 10 with the addition of 10 feet. So this house was actually divided, this is actually a divided half-house in 1982. I'll go back to the site plan. The City and Newburyport Zoning Board of Appeals, your predecessors granted a variance to split this house right here like that, and they are now two deeded separate half-houses. I've provided to you letters of support, importantly, from 33 Temple Street, Ms. Carey, as well as some of the other abutters, who also attended the Historic Commission meeting and spoke in favor of the... as well as some of the other abutters, who also attended the Historic Commission meeting and spoke in favor of the project. And so our request tonight would be the modification of the dimensional variance. We're not doing anything to change, obviously, the lot itself. If this were any other application, it would be a special permit for non-conformities. But because the dimensional variance was granted in 1982, we have to modify that dimensional variance. So the lot itself, the property measures 1,370 square feet of land. It's in the R2 zoning district, the D-C-O-D district, which is not triggered. And, and has, where the minimum lot area in the R2, of course, is 10,000 square feet. Until the down zoning a couple years ago, of course, this was an R3 district. The frontage is 28.4 feet, where 90 is required. The minimum front yard setback is 25. This is zero. Of course, all these houses along Temple Street here are at zero. Side yard setback on the southern side of the residence is 1.2 feet, where 10 feet are required. There's no side yard setback, obviously, where there's a shared lot line. And the height of the residence is 20.8 feet, where 35 is allowed. And of course, we're not changing the height at all of the residence. Lot coverage is at 59%, where 25% is allowed. And open space is 23, where 40% is required. So we actually have to modify the variance. And so the question is, shape, topography, soil condition here. I've sent, I've given to all of you a MyMaps, the city assessor's map, which shows the odd-shaped lot. Obviously, somebody else created that, not the current owner of that. He was not responsible for it. There's a very peculiar shape, no other lot like it in the neighborhood, which I've provided to you. In this instance, if the ordinance was strictly applied, it would preclude the petitioner from constructing the addition and help allow some aging in place, which we're all encouraging. We're not creating another unit here. Everybody's gonna be living in the same unit. We're just creating another bedroom to allow aging in place on the first floor. So there's unique circumstances, both because of the residence is gonna be taken up, as well as the shape of the property. The board can grant relief without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent and purpose of the ordinance. The variance was already granted in 1982. We're not doing anything to exacerbate that. The addition of a 10 by 11, so it's 110 square feet on the property. Already, the total will be 231 square feet, is certainly not substantially more detrimental and won't be a substantial detriment to the public good. In fact, the first purpose of the ordinance in section IC1 is to promote the health, safety, convenience, and general welfare of the inhabitants of the city, which this will certainly do. And it won't have a negative impact on any of the neighbors. In fact, it will certainly clean up a condition that has been detrimental. There have been some four-legged creatures that have taken up over the years in this back shed condition. The granting of variance will not be substantial detriment to the public good also. The addition is small, as I have indicated. It's 110 square feet. In fact, impacts will be nominal in light of the existing circumstances in the property. And as a result, given the requirements of 10H6, we believe the board can modify the variance that was previously given. As you know, we're not asking for a new variance, rather, a modification to the variance that was already given on the property. And we request the board's consideration.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in support of the application? Okay, hearing none. Anybody who would like to speak in opposition to the application? Okay. Questions from the board?
So the, the fact that there is an existing variance in place currently, and what you're proposing here is to, I guess, to modify that variance, but not, not get a new variance, does that change the standard that's applicable here under?
So it's, the standard is the standard, because it's a variance. And so the question is, are we, in my mind, the question is, are we doing anything that would change the basis upon which that variance was granted? So I provided all of to you the 1982 variance, which is not quite as detailed as our current variances. So it's unclear exactly what the basis was, other than the recitation. I mean, I think if you look at, you can see the full property in the MyMaps that I provided to you. And you see what happened. So there, it was a two-family, they just separated the two-family. I can guess that they just wanted separate houses and not a duplex anymore. I don't know the answer to that. The, and the lot shape is what it is. And so the property itself hasn't changed since 1700s, right? Except for to allow the actual separation of the property. And so the variance was granted to allow that. So I think the answer is yes, we need to follow those. If it were any, if this house did not have a variance on it, we would be here for a special permit for non-conformities. Not increasing any of the non-conformities and whether it's substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. So I went through the recitation of 10H6, and I believe that we meet those requirements. And I, and we're certainly not doing anything to modify the variance that was actually granted, except for to add this 100 square feet on the rear.
Right. But we, we are here for the variance and not a special permit, so.
That's correct.
Yeah. So the thing that I'm sort of struggling with, and I hope maybe that you can, you can help me with, is the, the unique soil condition, shape, topography of the land.
Correct.
It's not really the shape of the land that's the problem, is it? Isn't, isn't it just that it's small? Like, the shape itself really doesn't matter? It might be a funny shape, but it's a small lot, and that's where you're bumping into all these various shortcomings with respect to coverage and open space and whatnot.
Well, I take it as it is, right? So I, I, I take it as it exists today, which has an odd shape, right? So I'm, I'm asking to put an addition on something without, without negatively impacting the shape or the size or the soil condition of the lot. But because the variance exists, I have to go through the variance criteria. And so the, there is an odd shape of that lot. There's no question about that. I'm not making it more odd. The fact that I'm adding an addition doesn't, the, the 100 square feet addition isn't, I'm not caused to do that by, because there's not enough area, right? The variance that was granted was granted all around. Everything on the property didn't meet the zoning when the variance was granted in 1982. So that's not changing at all. I'm just changing the footprint of what existed. So I'm not technically intensifying the reasons for the variance. But because we have a plan of record that is a variance, I technically have to modify the variance to allow the addition to change the plan of record.
Okay, let me think about that for a minute.
Sure, as long as you want.
That was a lot.
Could you just, Attorney Meade, just go over the, where, in the back of the lot where it says proposed addition and then existing to be removed? I find that, so what existed or?
Right now, exists is this.
Okay.
This little bump out right here.
In the bigger square.
Where this, yeah. So this all exists right now.
Okay.
So technically, I'm adding less than 100 square feet. Because this exists right how, I did, I did the lawyer's math. I did 10 by 11, right? But technically, it's less than 100 square feet, because we're adding this section right here.
Okay, so just dumb it down for myself. So the, the square in the, in the small rectangle are going to be removed, and the proposed addition is, those two plus that other irregularly shaped?
Yes, that's correct. So technically, whatever this size is, 3, 4 by 6, it exists. So I'm adding less than 100 square feet.
And the height will be roughly the same?
The existing height, right.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Swanton?
Could you go to the elevation?
Okay.
The, the existing elevations don't show that little bump out. Is there, I'm confused.
Well, there, there is a bump out there, so I'm not sure why.
Why wouldn't it be shown on the existing elevation?
Well, maybe I leaned it in draft on there. So, oh, I know why it is. Those are steps. Are those steps? That's right. So I'm, so for lot coverage, those are steps and not a building.
Okay.
That's why.
So my related question was, I think you mentioned earlier that it was 10-10. The existing shed by, by 11, by 11.11 is on the, is on that page up there on the wall. 11-11 by 10-10.
And this is 10-10. I asked the architect before I came, yes.
Yeah, which I think you mentioned was about 121 square feet, roughly?
No, what I was talking about, my 100 square feet is this, 10 by 11. I was saying we were adding 10 by 11, so I didn't do the math on the other one.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's, I didn't have the data on the plan, so I couldn't do it ahead of time. But it says in your, in your, beginning of your application that the, the one-story addition with a slightly larger footprint measuring 231 square feet.
Correct.
You say slightly larger, but it's, it's almost doubling. I mean, it's, it's like 90% more. I'm just.
Well, I don't know if it's 90% more. I wouldn't say that it's 90% more, but this size, so.
From 121 to 231 is 90. I, I don't have the data, so I'm really, I guess I'm asking, what is the percent increase of this addition on the back of the house?
I don't know what the percentage increase is, but what I can tell you is the current addition is 11-11. Is that what that says right there? I can't read. 11-11 by 10-10. And we are adding 11-11 by 10. So it's just under a 50% increase. I don't know if that's the right math. It's half. It's just under half as big as what exists.
Yeah, it's confusing. To me, that's, that's, if it's just under half, it's almost doubling.
Okay, so it's, I, I don't disagree, but it's, it's 100 square feet.
But when it says the slightly larger footprint of the shed, it's, it's not slightly larger. It's considerably bigger, right?
Okay, well, so that's.
I just wanna make sure I understand that, that the word slightly larger, that's all.
Right, because I think it's small, generally speaking, so it's a little larger than what exists there now.
Okay.
That's my description of it. We can't argue with the numbers. It's 11-11 by 10-10. And then it's gonna be 11-11 by 10. So it's total of 20 feet 10 inches by 11-11, 231 square feet.
What threw me off is the word slightly. That's all.
Okay, so I'll watch my adjectives.
Okay.
Other questions? Ms. Palmero?
Can you just go over what the material will be?
Oh, it's gonna match existing. So Eileen, Eileen Graff is the architect. So she has, does she have match existing clavers? You can put it in the decision. It's all gonna match existing.
Match with real.
Yeah, so we had to do that for historic, and also, obviously, both Peter and Diana. I mean, you've seen the house. You know what house I'm talking about when you're driving down Temple Street. There's no, that's all, it's all gonna match. And you can absolutely put that in the decision without question.
I was trying to see if she had him on her next.
Yeah, Eileen didn't put it on. Oh, yeah, clavers match existing. She does have them.
She has it on there? Okay. One other question I had. It looks like this, the, this addition will abut this area. How's, could you just, do you know what that is?
That's the back of the condominium there, right?
Six Orange, it's driveway.
Yeah, parking lot and driveway in the back.
The actual line of the condominium to the actual line of the existing shed is, you know, a bridge.
20.
Not against each other, because there's a parking lot behind it.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Okay. Seeing none, we move into deliberation.
I like, I like this project. It looks, it looks nice. The drawings look very nice. I'm just struggling a little bit with the, with the legal, the legal standard. But otherwise, I think that it, it, it looks very nice, and it seems to serve a, a good purpose.
I think the, the addition that has been presented seems, you know, it doesn't, it's not over, overly sized for the area. I don't see anything that's really gonna impact any of the abutters, which I would have concern about venting with the bathroom there, but there's, it's a parking lot.
Right.
Looks like it's not changing from a parking lot. As far as the standards, I, I think the applicant has met the standards. The, the lot itself is unique based on circumstances that were not created by the applicant. It is a half-house. The lot shape is very unique in the way it is. I think also that strict application of provision of the chapter may deprive the applicant the ability to use the lot in such a way. Here, they're removing a shed, and they're putting in a, simply a bedroom addition to the house that's going to serve to allow them to have one of their family members stay at home. Oh, live at the house, I mean. I don't think it is, it going to deprive, excuse me, their equivalent to be able, its permitted uses made by other owners in the neighborhood. Unique conditions, circumstances are not the result, again, of what the applicant has done. Subsequent to the adoption of this chapter was a variance that was put in the 80s as presented by the applicant, giving us a copy of that application. I don't also see, see this as a special privilege or whether it would also inconsistent with limitations upon other properties in the district. So I think I, I feel that I could be in support of this application.
So those, those are the, you read the criteria for, for a variance. Any other deliberation? I always, when we have these variances that come up due to a variance on some kind of prior decision, I can, I'm definitely swayed by the argument that, you know, this is unique because of that, as much as the shape, as much as anything else, and otherwise constituted. What's being proposed is actually an improvement in that a rundown structure is being replaced with a new one. It's adding utility, so that, you know, you've already, Ms. Palmero's already ticked off the variance questions that I think apply, but, you know, for those reasons and the fact that, you know, I agree with my colleague that it's a, it's a really nice, well-planned addition to the area. So I think it meets all the criteria. They've already been spelled out, but. Okay.
I'm in support of the application as well, for the reasons already reiterated.
I, I would also add, just as Attorney Meade noted, we were given three letters in support. One is from 33 Temple, and that if you were facing the building, it's the half, half-house on the left. Also 37, which must be the building on the right. And then Six Orange Street, those condominiums that are behind, so that, that is, is good. I would agree, so I would, I would support it as well. So would anyone like to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve application number 2020 dash 0017, dimensional variance for 35 Temple Street.
Seconded.
Motion's been made by myself, seconded by Mr. Moore to approve application number 2020 dash 017, dimensional variance by Temple Street. Ms. Palmero, yes. Mr. Cameron?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
And Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Call, call Chair Champetti back in.
And my brother and partner thanks you, as I thank you. So thank you.
Good luck.
Best of luck.
I could get used to this.
Yeah.
You're welcome. I think I've left everything for you.
Good.
You got a little relaxation. I hope you keep your microphone on.
Okay, so picking up where we left off, the last hearing this evening is the matter of 61 Purchase Street. And I'll go ahead and read the.
of Sixty-one Purchase Street, and I'll go ahead and read the legal notice and we'll get into the application. Notice of a public hearing, Newburyport Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on an application for a special permit for nonconformities filed by Winward Shaw LLC, care of Lisa Mead, Mead Talamanacosta LLC, for the property owned by Sarah Golden and Ashley Strab, located at Sixty-one Purchase Street in the R-two zoning district, assessor's map twenty-six dash eighty-two. The hearing will be held at City Hall sixty Pleasant Street, Newburyport, Mass., on February twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty, at seven PM, at which time all interested parties will be heard. Thank you. The request is made under Newburyport Zoning Ordinance Section nine-B-two and nine-B-three-C, extension or alteration. The applicant seeks all necessary approvals, permits, special permits and/or variances on the following request: to renovate and construct in addition to a pre-existing nonconforming structure. May we hear from the applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Marissa Miller of Mead Talamanacosta, and I'm here on behalf of Winward Shaw LLC, the applicant and contractor for the project. Here with me tonight are George Hazelton from Winward Shaw, Scott Brown, who's the architect on the project, and the owners of the property, Sarah Golden and Ashley Strab, are right behind Mr. Moore. So tonight, we're here seeking a special permit for nonconformities. We've revised our proposal since you first saw it, so you should have those materials, and that's what I'll cover tonight. So first, I just want to point out some photographs I have of the property, just so you can see it in context, what the house looks like, how it sits on the lot. So this is in the R-two zoning district and demolition control overlay district. The house was constructed in around eighteen-fifty. The lot is pre-existing nonconforming for area, it's seven-thousand-one-hundred-two square feet, where ten thousand is the minimum, and the structure itself is pre-existing nonconforming for front yard setback. It's six-point-two feet where twenty-five is required, and the, the side yard setback is four-point-two feet, where ten feet is required, over here on this side. So the proposal is to construct a two-story addition at the rear and side, which is right here. This is the proposed addition. So we're here tonight because this front part of the addition will extend the front yard setback that's already nonconforming. However, it will be set back twenty-three-point-five feet, so it's not right up on the property line. And then the other, the other reason that we're here is because the, the added square feet will be more than five-hundred. So those are the two reasons that we're seeking the special permit for nonconformities. Less than twenty-five percent of the exterior walls will be demolished, we're at twenty-point-six percent, which is in our materials, so the DCOD is not triggered. So right now, I'm going to hand it over to the architect, Scott Brown, to cover our elevations.
Thank you, Marissa. Again, Scott Brown, the architect for the project. So we're planning to sort of undertake kind of a whole-house renovation, which includes a couple of additions and also a, a reskinning of the existing box. And I use the word additions in plural, because we're actually treating a couple parts of this differently. So this is the existing, do we have the existing second floor plan up here? We do not. We have the existing second floor plan here, so again, I'm using the word additions, plural, because we're treating a couple things differently. So the first thing we're doing is, this is the existing second floor plan, and we are adding to the back of the house, extending it out towards the backyard, and that addition is right here. This is a two-story addition, and we are treating this as if it's an extrusion of the existing volume, meaning that the details are going to match the existing, existing house, the siding is going to match the existing house. Again, you know, the intent is to sort of make it look like that was always meant to be there. The second addition that we're doing is on the left side of the property, right here, and this is a single-story addition, and this is meant to be, from a design standpoint, one of contrast. So you can see here that we're actually sort of treating the, the windows a little differently, we have some different siding, it may perhaps even be a different color than the main body of the house, but yet, at the same time, we, we have some themes, some details that are the same, so it's, it's different, but not too different. In terms of the existing box, we're keeping, this is the existing original box of the house, we're keeping all of the window openings in their original locations, right side, these are all existing window openings. I use the word reskin. This is currently clad with a cedar sidewall shingle, which is not original to the house. So one of the things we're planning to do is to remove that and actually re-clad it with a painted wood clavverd. The only thing that we're actually doing different to this existing box is we're just proposing to sort of want, remove and infill one existing window on the left side. Moving around to the back, you per, may perhaps have seen an earlier version of these plans. These represent a somewhat scaled-back version of the project. We were originally planning to sort of add additional second-floor footprint over this single-story addition on the right side, right here, the site plan. This is, this is actually one story right here. This is not original to the house, but we're keeping it, keeping it intact. One of the casualties of that earlier plan that you may have seen was this chimney right here. So with this scaled-back version of the project, we're, we're proposing to keep this chimney, which is actually in pretty good shape, is original to the house and is wood burning, so that is a good thing. And, and just left side, so our single-story addition here, it's set back from the front and actually touches the original box in a very, very delicate way, and we think what we've done here has been very sensitive in terms of the original part of the house. And with that, I'll hand it back to counsel.
Thanks, Scott. Okay, so with a special permit for nonconformities, there's, there are two requirements that must be met. The first is that there will not be any new nonconformities, there won't be. All we're doing here is extending the front yard nonconforming setback, and then we're here also for the additional over five-hundred square feet, but we're not creating any new nonconformities. And then the other requirement is that this is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing condition. I handed out a MIMAP view where I provided the square footages of the surrounding lots, excluding the lots across this street, which do get larger, but the lots that I've written the square footage on, you can see that this lot is larger than all of the abutting lots. And you can also see where the houses are on the lot to the rear and then to the, to the side. I lost my site plan. But those structures are all removed to the point where this addition is not going to be looming over these abutting structures on these abutting properties. So I would argue that this is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, given the size of the lot, and that we comply with all of the other requirements under the ordinance, such as lot coverage, open space, and all of those other requirements. So finally, I want to add that this does trigger the tree and sidewalk ordinance. Jamie Tucola went out and looked at the property and has made some suggestions for repairing the sidewalk and dealing with the trees and consulting with the arborist, and the applicant will comply with the ordinance and the suggestions of DPS, and we're okay with a condition in a decision, if we have a favorable decision, that we will comply with the ordinance in that sense. So with that, I would respectfully request that the board grant a special permit for nonconformities for this project.
Okay, thank you. Anyone wish to speak in support of the application? Yes, Ms. Nickicich.
Stephanie Nickicich, Ninety-three High Street. This is support conditioned on something that is, would be up to the applicant. It is a large lot, it is also a large addition, so, and that's one of the reasons they're here, and it's always a, it's always a danger to add so much volume to an old house. But I, I'm felt, familiar with the architect's work in Newburyport, and I'm familiar with the builder, and they, they have a history of doing quality projects. But one of the things that they're trying to do on the addition, as it's visible from Purchase Street, is to differentiate it, which is a, you know, which is a, a good thing to do when you're adding on to a historic house. This is a very handsome historic house with very nice detail. So the idea is to make it look different, so people can tell that it's new, but not make it look so different that it's, it's jarring. So that's, in terms of the different materials that will be used, that, that might be a question for you to ask, how, you know, how the different materials they plan for the addition, as it's visible from the street achieves that. One of the things that, that I also hope you will do is talk about the, the windows of the existing building, which is what I was talking to Mr. Hazelton about. The, as I understand it, the current plan is to replace them and not with true divided lights. So it really makes a difference on, on this type of house to, when that happens, and a very nice subtle differentiation, old versus new, is to keep more of the old. So by, by putting in at least true divided lights, if not keeping the original windows, but putting in true divided lights on the sides and the front of the original building, that could be achieved, and I think it would help, help with the differentiation, old versus new, and it would, it would, it would keep the, the quality of that original building, which is almost, you know, unexpressible to people who love old buildings intact. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
George Hazelton, Winward Shaw. I did speak with Stephanie out in the hallway, and, you know, I, I agree with her and I appreciate your feedback. I will encourage the homeowners to explore using true divided light windows on the main box of the house, the front and the sides. Minimally, we're going to be using a high-quality simulated divided light window with an aluminum clad and an interior wood sash, but I do recognize the importance, especially with a house that looks like that, to try and maintain some of those features as much as possible. And we will be, at a minimum, donating all the existing windows to Window Woman of Amesbury. I did, I have contacted them, they said as long as I can bring them there, they're happy to accept them and use them for their various repairs or refurbishments. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak in support of the application? Seeing no hands. Anyone wish to speak in opposition? Seeing no hands. Questions from the board?
I guess I'll ask my usual. Can you just expand a little bit more on the detail for the, what materials will be used on the addition?
Scott?
So again, this is, this is the left side, left side elevation, this is our one-story addition right here, this is our two-story addition in the back, so the two-story addition, this is going to be a wood clavverd, so this will all be sort of the same material right here. All of the trim at the top will either be wood or kind of a rot-resistant material to kind of match some of the existing details, so that'll blend in very nicely. In here, some of this detail right here matches, matches the existing details, so this will either be sort of wood or rot, rot-resistant products, and the siding of this is intended to be sort of like a, a horizontal ship lap, and it's going to be an exposure that matches two times the exposure of the clavverd, so they're going to tie together very, very nicely. That will be painted, and that is likely to be a rot-resistant product, and the preferred product of choice these days is sort of like a, a polyash, so not a wood product. But at the end of the day, that'll hold up very well, it'll hold up, hold paint for a long time, and it'll look like, look like wood.
Okay. From what I understand from the revised application, there's going to be demolition of less than twenty-five percent wall area. Can you just explain what wall area is going to be removed?
We have the existing condition drawings up there. I have a...
There you go.
Yeah, I have, I have a board here with the existing condition drawings on it, and...
Yeah.
So the only, correct me if I'm wrong, our, our only calculations are actually for this bulkhead right here, and we actually have the DCOD, do we have the, my DCOD calculation sheet here?
There you go.
Yeah, which shows, you know, the area that we're removing here, and this is, this is really a bulkhead for basement, basements there, and, you know, this area, that the way the ordinance is written, or actually, this area right here, since this is the one side that we're putting our addition on, does not count against the, the calculation.
And I understand the builders indicated exploring, obviously, they're not going to explore maintaining, it looks like they're replacing, but it's exploring whether or not you'll be using the, the exemplar that Stephanie indicated.
Yeah, so I will, having a discussion with the homeowners, encouraging them on the original main office of the house, using instead of simulated divided light, but using a true divided light alternative to simulated divided light. I can't make that decision for them this second, and more if I even ask to by the board, but certainly, I think that the board knows anything about my, my work and Scott's work, we're absolutely going to fall through on that and try and make that happen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions? Anyone? Deliberations? And, let's see, this is a special permit for nonconformities, so our criteria is the special permit criteria in evaluating this. Do we have anyone from the, from, I'm sorry. We, we didn't, as of the staff report, have any information regarding DPS's review for street trees and...
Yep, and then I forwarded an email that says he's recommending repair of the sidewalk and replacement of the trees.
Thank you.
Along Purchase Street.
Okay, now, is everybody, did everybody get that email?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Go ahead, Mark, sorry about that.
So, no, I don't, you know, as we know, there's no non, new nonconformities, and then just having, you know, looked at the property and, and the neighborhood and the area and the way that the yard is positioned and fenced, I, I don't see any massing problems with this addition. Obviously, it's, it's well-thought, well-planned, no massing, no sale, scale or size issues, so I, I certainly don't see a problem there from a special permit side.
Okay.
I'm going to concur with Mr. Moore on this one.
I don't think, I don't see anything that would indicate that this is going to be more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood than, or that a pre-existing nonconforming user structure, and I think the, you know, the, the builder and the architect have shown great care as to how they're going to, an attempt to maintain the facade of the original structure, and then creating a bit of a uniqueness, so that is a good indication. When people look at it, they're going to know what the, what's the addition, what's the original, and, but there's still some tie-ins that I, I think aesthetically will look very nice, so I can support this.
Okay. Anyone else?
I agree.
Yeah, I, I agree as well. I think the applicant's... Yeah, I, I agree as well. I think the applicants carried their burden based on the standard and certainly demonstrated beyond that. A credibility of follow-through, which is important with respect to materials and, and those selections, so I, I agree with you all. I can support it as well. Was there anything else in deliberation before we move to a vote?
Do we have any discussion on, or just a condition that they work with DPW and?
Yes, well, that would be, a motion should carry the condition that, that the, the recommendations of DPS regarding repair of the sidewalk and installation of street trees as per the planning office's email to the board. You know, that would be part of it, so that it would all be carried in the same decision. Yes?
Just a comment that I, I believe the recommendation from DPS was to recommend full sidewalk replacement. It wasn't just repair.
Oh, was it? I'm sorry.
It wasn't just repair. It was full replacement, as well as removal of two existing trees and replace with approved street trees.
Okay. Do, do you want?
That's, that's our intent, so we're okay with that.
So Ms. Web, do you want to craft that as a motion, or is that a motion or just sort of a comment?
That was just a.
Okay. Well, I think, you know, I would agree. We would just make that part of, part of the condition for a motion. So do we have a motion then?
We can make a motion to approve special permit for non-conformities, application number two zero two zero zero one eight for Sixty-One Purchase Street, with the conditions that sidewalks, the sidewalks and tree issues, as instructed by DPS, will be followed. Chimney stays per new plans, and window concerns will be discussed with the owners.
Seconded.
Maybe with respect to the motion, maybe we just, just articulate it just like Ms. Webb did from, you know, just as, as stated. Does, anybody have, do you have that?
Oh, the letter of intent from DPS?
Can we just read that?
First off, it's that, as indicated by the email regarding, from the Department of Public Works, there'll be replacement of sidewalks and owner will, and work with the trees. Second, owner will explore windows, the true light windows.
True divided light windows.
True divided light windows.
I think that's clear enough. Okay, motion's made and seconded. Ms. Palmer?
Okay. Chairman Chinpetty?
Yes.
Palmer, yes. Mr. Cameron?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative. The motion carries. The application's approved. Thanks.
Thank you.
Having no further business before the Zoning Board of Appeals, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion's made and seconded. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned. And guys, if you want to turn off your mics as well.